Call this board meeting to order for the Peewaiki School District, date of September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. I will start with the roll call. Larry?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Ashley?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Thank you. Was the meeting properly noticed?
The meeting was properly noticed.
And can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, our first order of business tonight is we have a new student board representative. And we're going to swear in Maura Peterson tonight, so I'm gonna let Matt take over.
You get to be front and center there, Maura.
Yep.
Okay, so this is your last request to serve. May I have your research again? And we have, I am Maura Peterson, who have been duly selected to serve as a student representative to the Board of Education of the Peewaiki Public School District. Swear that I will represent the interest of all students, support the mission, vision, and values of the Peewaiki School Board, and will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities as defined in Board and Education Policy five seven zero zero point zero six. Board student representative to the best of my ability.
I am Maura Peterson. We've been duly selected to serve as a student representative to the Board of Education of the Peewaiki Public School District. Swear that I will represent the interest of all students, support the mission, vision, and values of the Peewaiki School Board, and will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities as defined in Board of Education Policy five seven zero zero point zero six. Board student representative to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Congratulations. Can I just ask quick, um, what motivated you to wanna be a part of the board as a student rep?
At the time I applied, I was a junior, so I turned into more involved as an opener of the school. To know everyone and all present.
That's awesome. We're so glad to have you. Thank you. All right, next. Tonight we have the Booster Club organization here, and we're gonna get a recap on this past school year.
I'm Marika.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Um, for those that don't know me, Marika Westerman, I've been, I think this is my lucky number seventh year as president, but also my final, because I have a graduating senior, so you won't see me next year, probably.
You might hear from Jeff.
So this is our, uh, we do a fiscal year. This is our fundraising for this most recent fiscal year. Um, as you can see, concessions just absolutely tends to be our top fundraiser, and being in the Classic Eight Football Conference, I feel like that really helped us. Football is always really good for us. We brought in like a ton of revenue that way. We switched to, um, including credit card machines as well, which I feel like brought in quite a bit more revenue for us, uh, over the past couple of years. And then grants, um, this is always just such a great number to, that we were able to give back over a hundred thousand dollars in grants back to the school. Um, this includes both discretionary grants and then the concessions grants. And then some of our more notable grants, um, the Rocket signage that is right outside. I feel like it's, well, it's concession stand, but kind of right over on that wall. I don't know if anybody's seen it yet or if it's up and running yet, but that was kind of a big exciting, um, contribution this year. And then always lots of travel for any of our state teams that are making it further along. And then the huddle subscription, which we've been donating to annually. Um, that includes the camera and all the streaming package and all that good stuff. Contributed to some volleyball nets and then robotics. Those are just some of our, our bigger grants. And then other giving, we also do four seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarships each year. We do a teacher appreciation lunch, and we finally redesigned the grad sign. That had been many, many years, so that was exciting. Each graduating senior gets a free, um, yard sign. And then these are our scholarship winners. We had around twenty applications this past year, which tends to be pretty average, pretty competitive. And then just closing out with just a few highlights, um, again, our teacher appreciation lunch that we do. We had a really nice community event at Stanny's last fall, and we're gonna be doing that again this year and honoring Jeff. So, um, we'll be getting a date out. That'll be in November, so watch for that. And then we did a flag year for our membership, and we always, um, partner with the PTO on a bucks ticket promotion. That goes really well. Awesome. So any questions for me?
Well, I wanted to say thank you for all that the Booster Club does for the district. And I'm just curious if there's specific projects or things that you're looking to fund this year.
Um, we don't have anything specific that we're fundraising for this year. I think in the past, we had fundraised towards the weight rooms, so we did, you know, purchase equipment and things like that. But just really keep the momentum going, be able to continue to support all the athletics and activities that we can, so.
Thank you, Marika. Seven years is a lot.
It's a long run, Madam President.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Marika.
Next, we have salutes and recognitions, and I'm gonna start out. Um, this last Friday, because Mike was out of town, I had the really neat privilege of riding along with the four Kers on the bus. And I rode Sherry's bus, and I, I just really wanna give a shout out. This woman, um, she's just the epitome of an amazing bus driver. She knows her kids. She knows her families. Um, she's so personable. Safety is number one. She even has her bus set up with little signs where each child gets to sit. And she takes into consideration their friends, their age. She's amazing. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to her, but also all of our other bus drivers that I know work so hard to keep our kids safe. Thanks, Sherry, for all you do. Anyone else? Admin?
Hey, salute. I have one.
Go ahead.
Um, I would, I'd like to salute Melinda Larson-Horn. Um, as I've shared with the board, we have transitioned from a five-year curriculum renewal process to a six-year process. And there's a lot of organization that is involved in kind of setting that process up. Uh, the old process was good, but it just needed some updating and some more detail included. And Melinda has a very, she's gifted when it comes to attention to detail, so she has redesigned all of the forms and all the associated documents that go with the, uh, curriculum renewal process. So I just wanted to salute Melinda, because that is above and beyond her normal role as an instructional coach.
I just wanna thank you, Brent, for filling in for me, picking up the slack on the four K bus routes, and thanks for, um, uh, picking that up with me being, uh, out of town. Um, a nod to, uh, John Gann for everything he does, working with Go Right Way to, um, get our bus routes in order. We had a notable earlier release today from campus, so it's always a little bit of a, you know, the first few days, especially the elementary routes, it's probably ten to fifteen minutes late that they're pulling, just making sure everything's right. And I think we were only about five minutes late from kind of what we're shooting for. Normally we shoot for about a three forty-five, and I think it was about three fifty today. But they were rolling, so already it's, uh, moving more efficiently. Um, and, uh, with, uh, Jeff here, I'd give him a nod for all the fall sports getting off to a good start, um, so, um, so there's just a couple people I'd recognize.
All right. Um, if that's all for salute, Tammy, do we have any citizen comments?
All right, thank you.
Next, the consent agenda. Um, that includes the meeting, um, minutes from previous meetings on August eighteenth. Um, and also business affairs, a correspondence that was, um, included in your packet, and gifts. I do have to mention that Milwaukee Tool, um, donated fifteen thousand dollars worth of tools for our new addition. I just, I just think Milwaukee Tool's an amazing company. They always do so much for others in the community. And what a gracious, incredible gift, um, to our high school, to help our kids who are starting out new in this new CTE space. So thank you, Milwaukee Tool. So if I could get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I'll ask Stacy if she'll speak to the Business Affairs Committee tonight.
Yep. So we had our meeting. Uh, we went through, uh, the Normal Check Registers financial report. Um, we are sitting, of course, at a very low, uh, number as far as revenues collected. We're only at point five seven percent of budget. Our expenses are about seven point six percent. Um, the notable thing that happened was the property taxes, which were receivable, so it's not counted as revenue. But the property taxes of seven point five million came in, um, in the month of August. And John tends to try to give us a feel for how, uh, the self-insured insurance is running. And we are running a little high. Uh, there were five Fridays in August, so that increases it, and just expenses are running high. Um, but we appreciate the work he and his team do to manage that, um, program. So, um, not, nothing to be alarmed about, but it did run a little high for August, relatively speaking. Um, do you wanna talk about the other?
Sure. Uh, the other two items we, we addressed at the committee level is our calendar. So the Business Affairs Committee, um, all the areas that are non-instructional in the district, including food service, transportation, budgeting, auditing, accounting. All of those other, all those aspects are addressed at one meeting or multiple meetings throughout the year, where we do a presentation, get a little bit more in-depth on the performance in each of those areas. So tonight was to review the calendar of the sequence of those reviews that'll be happening through the year and get the committee approval. Uh, and address any issues that they might wanna also see at the committee level above and beyond that. And then, uh, we do throughout the facility master planning projects, we'll do a little, uh, more in-depth look at the, uh, progress on the projects, both from a financial and from a timing standpoint. As to where we stand on the completion. Uh, at the committee level, we reviewed that. Tonight, at the board level, we come back to the full board quarterly, essentially, and give a report on the progress of those projects, so we'll look at that some more later in the, in the regular meeting.
So anyone have any questions, your honor, Stacy?
Motion to accept the Business Affairs Report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, Policy Committee. Um, we have a couple of versions on that first policy. I'm gonna let, um, Ashley speak to it, but I would like us to vote tonight on one of those policies to move forward. And when we get to that point, I'm asking that we could, um, I'll bring up both policies, and if you could vote by raised hand for whichever policy you are in favor of. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
So... We have the banned and the restricted communication device, personal communication device policies that are up. Um, which that one, I think, I don't know, do we wanna start with discussion on that?
Maybe if you wanna go through the others, then we'll come back.
Okay. So then besides those two, we have the policy number fifty-two hundred point zero one, student retention and acceleration. Thirty-five hundred point zero one, fixed charges, insurance. Fifty-one hundred point zero three, full-time student. Fifty-one hundred point zero five, assignment of students to classes. And fifty-five hundred point zero nine, free and reduced-priced lunch services. Anybody have any questions or concerns about any of those policies? So then with that, we'll move on to the personal communication device policy, restricted versus banned. I think we kind of wanted to see what everybody's thoughts were, questions that people had about one versus the other.
I can start. I think this isn't a surprise, because I kind of spoke to this at one of our previous meetings. Um, I am in favor of banning the use of personal communication devices on our campus. Um, I think that the restrictive use, I just think that I don't wanna get into an area where there's gray and there's interpretation. And I think that, like I said the last time I spoke on this, I wanna be the adult in the room that makes a hard decision for the best of our students and children. Um, and I know it may not be popular with the entire student population especially, but even some of the parents. But I truly believe that this policy, um, could be a difference maker in their lives. And, um, I'm willing to, you know, talk to the community about it. If they have feedback that could be challenging, I will, I will take that. Um, but I really think that we need to make the hard choice right here and do the hard thing.
Thanks, Stacy. I wanna add to that and say, I agree with you. I think, um, whenever you get into a gray area versus just black and white, and you allow too many exceptions. I think that's where we get into that area where maybe things could fail. And we don't want this to fail, because we truly believe this is what our students need to better their education. Um, at one point in, I think, both of these, it talks about an exception. Um, and it lists the various people that can make those decisions. I firmly believe it should be administration, um, that makes those decisions. Um, I think it's really hard to ask our teachers to make those decisions. Um, and personally, if there's an exception made, then that's where things can fail, right? Failure can take one person, one person who is well-meaning, thinking they could make an exception. But next thing you know, you've got students bickering with each other, 'cause, hey, my buddy goes to this class, and their teacher allowed him to do this. And I don't have that teacher, but none of mine allow for that exception. And I, I just think, maybe, let's just avoid that and just, just keep it black and white. The, the less exceptions we have, I think, the better off we are.
On that note, I, I think I've also been on record many times talking about the support I have for the teachers in our, in our district. Um, and I support them, and I, I don't wanna over-regulate them, but on the same hand, I think that if we just ban it, it removes the issue of them deciding which way, you know, the black and the gray and, and, and things like that. Um, as far as within their classroom, and I just, I'm hoping that they can see that that's, my goal is to take that off their plate. That it's not something that they have to, to respond to the students of. It's us. Like, this is where we're setting the policy, and if there are people in our community that are unhappy, it should be with us and not with the teachers and not with the administrators.
I, I fully agree. I had said to Larry earlier today that, um, you know, some of these kids, maybe their situation is such that their one trusted adult is one of those teachers in the high school. And if we turn them into phone police, maybe that changes the relationship between teachers and students. And so I'm with Stacy. Um, I trust and appreciate our teachers. I don't wanna put them in a place that makes it difficult for them. So I'd rather have us be the heart-nose and along with administration and, um, not put that burden onto them.
I mean, I think in conjunction with everything that you guys have said, I, I look at it from a mental health perspective. And, I mean, there's gonna be pros and cons for either, either way that we go. Um, but I look at it in a sense of if we're encouraging and fostering kids to have to communicate with each other instead of sitting on a screen when they're in between classes. I feel like that's gonna be just a much better environment, and I don't know if you guys wanna chime in on any of this stuff too, 'cause I think it would be great to have your perspective as students. Just in regards to what you guys see. I mean, in the lunchroom, is there phones right now? Are people mostly on their phones when they're, when it's lunchtime versus like talking to each other?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, like, I've heard nothing good about it, but that's expected. I mean, it's kids that are on their phones. I mean, it wasn't that much of an adjustment for me personally, 'cause I never really, really went on my phone anyways, and most of the teachers I had were the teachers that wouldn't let you have your phones out. But I know that there was some concern, especially with like registering for AP tests and stuff, because when you sign up for AP classroom, you have to use your personal email. And then it became a question of like, what if the teacher thinks I'm on my phone, but I'm really just looking at the email? And then there was just a couple of little things, like registering for classes and stuff like that, that made it difficult. But overall, I mean, in the lunchrooms, kids have always been on their phones. I mean, now it's not really that much of a difference. It's just kind of the same amount. But I will say, like, the lunchroom is a place where I do see kids interacting as well, though it's not like they're all just kinda hunched over their phones, so.
Um, in my opinion, I think the way that they're restricted now, I mean, students use, like, they acknowledge that lunchtime is their, like, break time, that they can go and check their phone. Like, I have multiple sports going on right now, so a lot of my coaches will communicate through sports, so that's usually at the time I'll see the sports information or stuff like that. Like, I'm not just scrolling on my phone during lunch. I mean, check it, and then there's always people talking to their friends. I'll still check my phone maybe, but I'll still talk to my friends during lunch. I don't think, well, being on the phone during what they assume are break time, it's taking away from communicating and talking to others.
I have a question. So back to the two of you. So let's say, um, the policy was put in place to ban, I'm gonna use the word exception, and I just spoke out against it. But what if the exception were made that phones could be used during lunch hour? My concern about that is that, okay, yes, you're giving kids whose parents might be communicating, maybe an employer, a coach. But my concern is if we allowed with the ban for phones to be used just during lunch hour. Will we have an issue with students wanting to get off their phones at the end of lunch hour and go back to a banned existence till the end of the school day?
I think that's definitely a valid concern. I do see that being an issue. Um, just since kids, like, they see that as their break, so they're gonna take advantage of it, and then they have it, they don't wanna give it back up. Um, so I would agree, and I think, like, if it's banned the whole day and they're going and answering their parents and talking to their employers and stuff, like, I do see it being an issue of, like, maybe they're super busy by the time lunch is over. Juggling all that, and then not actually interacting with the kids around them, which, I mean, now, yes, they're on their phone sometimes, but I would agree, like, they're still interacting, which I think is the important. But if you were to just make it at lunch, then I don't think that there would be really any. Yeah, yeah, 'cause they see it as like their only time.
I appreciate the ease of contact through the phone with coaches and, and, and bosses and stuff. But I wanna remind you that you have an email, and it can be used. Um, so I don't give much weight, I'm sorry to tell you, but I don't give much weight to that argument. Because I think, again, the, the cost of these devices to so much of your development and your emotional well-being does not, it, it outweighs the ability to have immediate contact with a parent, coach, or boss. The, the email should suffice.
I mean, I agree, I agree with you, Stacy. I think that, you know, if, are there other options for ways that you can communicate if it's outside of email? Or are these things that coaches need to get to you in the middle of the school day versus can you wait till the end of the school day to, to have that contact or get that information?
I hope you two don't feel attacked. We appreciate your opinions.
Appreciate your opinion.
We want your feedback.
We do want your feedback.
I'm not playing a sport right now, so I feel like I'm not really the correct person to answer that question. Um, but...
And honestly, if you look at your Chromebooks, I, I think that we would say, there's a lot of things you could do with your Chromebooks, like send email text messages back and forth. So communication with others isn't completely cut off, whether it be friends at school or parents or whoever. So I think the option... So I think the options are still there. We're just taking away that device that isn't simply a Chromebook. It's bringing so much more into the classroom besides education.
So I probably have a different point of view on this Stacy, just so you know. That as we worked and I looked at it in terms of what's out there, and I'm fully aware of all of the potential issues regarding the use of the, not the device so much itself, but it's the social media associated with that and the bullying that goes along with those kinds of things. But if we think about it in terms of a communication, a phone or a text messaging capability, does that offer us something in terms of being able to allow our students to be able to have that kind of interaction? And I think that's where I kind of been torn because if we totally ban it, that means that they would have no access to anything other than their Gmail account, which is okay, fine. Email is one thing, but there's a convenience factor to being able to use text messaging capabilities out there. And when I think about that in terms of text messaging, a lot of our students do have multiple activities that they're involved in. With the size of our, our building here and they're not going to necessarily run into their friends or somebody that they need to meet up with to work on a project. They can do that much easier being, via a text message, if you will. And yes, indeed, email would work, but okay, it may or may not be the most convenient. The other thing is too, is that we also have students that work. And so, okay, we'd be expecting somebody in their work or employment to be able to access their school Gmail account and/or personal email account. But you can't get to your personal email account on your school computer, right? So that's not available to them. So they'd have to use their e, uh, school account if there's employment situations or if, again, family members need to try to have a coordinate logistics of picking up kids or appointments or those kinds of things. So I mean, I want to kind of give some latitude, if you will, to allow the students to be able to have access to it at the high school level, to be able to be able to do what's there. The other thing which I've tried to get a really good handle on it, and Mr. Sniff is in the audience tonight as well as Mike in terms of what's there. There are classes where we actually have them using their cellphone devices, if you will, or smartphone devices. So there's one called social media and marketing. They also maybe sometimes do video things or if they're doing something in terms of with the art classes in terms of with those components of it. I found out today that there may be FIED classes where they're recording and documenting and logging their physical activity, kinds of things that are going on in terms of the FIED classes. So if we have classes where they're expected to use their cellphones, I mean, can we totally ban it here at the high school versus allowing the kids some degree of access to it to be able to do some of those things that are there? I don't know the differences in terms of the passing time versus the lunchtime. I mean, if we restrict the time, and I don't know how many, I mean, we don't have that many minutes between classes that they're doing a lot of texting and phoning, if you will, during, in between classes, if you will. So that was a, a kind of my other component of it, is that there's work things, that there's schedule things in terms of their lives and family lives that are there that may be different, especially if they're providing any kind of transportation to their siblings that might be involved if they have vehicles or driving components with that. So I'm more in favor of obviously using the restricted. I have no problems whatsoever with the PLE Horizon and ASIA having limited, totally limited access, you know, from bell to bell, if you will. But the high school kids, I have a little bit of a feeling that I think that they're, if we take it away totally, that might be a real challenge. And as I look around the room, I see Matt, I see Ashley, I see Brent, I see, see folks down there. You all have your cellphones on your desktop. If we do that, that goes away, you know? I mean, it's like, okay, if we're going to be role models for it, are you going to put your cellphones in your backpacks or your pockets? Or are you going to keep them on the table here tonight? Because that's what we're asking these students. And notice, they don't have their cellphones on their desktop and neither do I. You know, I don't need to use it. I don't need to pull it out. I can do things after the meeting. Okay, fine. But I think that's the mixed messages we might be sending here in terms of what is it we expect our kids to do in the classroom versus what we do ourselves. And again, we can all control and regulate how many times we check. Our voicemails, check our emails, check our whatever text messages. And I think that our kids are capable of doing that on their own. And if we've had issues this week, I think you said what, 25 so far last week that were potential cellphone, smartphones were.
Confiscated.
Well, taken from the students and put in the office and then they added, so it's like there, was that their first violation or multiple violations, but.
They would have all been, I believe, first violations.
It could be self-regulated, but.
Larry, I think though that we've been doing that for many years now. And if you remember, I remember Liz Cessesi giving us a nursing report. And we were talking about the increase in mental health issues that we're seeing. And we said, what do you think, what could we do? And she said, get the cellphones out of their hands during the day. That's stuck by me for so long, Larry. They are at a different point in their development than the seven of us sitting here. And I, I don't see that as being an argument. I don't let my 16-year-old drink alcohol, but I drink alcohol. When your children were here, how did you communicate with them if you had to pick them up early? There's ways to do that. You can make a phone call. We have the, the Gmail. So I don't see, like I said, the cost benefit to me is nowhere near worth it. What we're seeing happening to our children in this world today. And I, I, I brought this up too. I think when cellphones kind of first came into being, the rationale was, well, they need to learn how to live with them. They need to learn how to self-regulate. We have failed at that. They don't know how to self-regulate. Again, my apologies, I'm not trying to be insulting. But we as the adults in the room, I think, need to make the hard decision. And as I've shared with all of you, I spoke to a teacher that did this in their school and it was not a problem. Jobs weren't lost. Parents weren't able, you know, it's, parents were able to communicate with their children when they had to.
In, in fact, in talking with the superintendent and the, the board president from Aguano Go, who instituted this, um, they, they were both willing to say, hey, the first couple of weeks were a, a little rough. Cause let's face it, we're all a bit addicted to our cellphones. But once they got through those first two weeks, they said, everyone was just willing to accept that these weren't accepted on and out during the school day. And they've seen positive changes in test scores, relationships between students, behavioral issues. So, um, I, I think we're in the right in doing this. And, and we're not doing it to be mean to students. We're doing it because as your board members, we're here to make sure you get the very best education. And this decision is part of that.
Other than I don't think we've necessarily addressed the issue though. I mean, do we allow students to use it for their social media classes? Do we allow to have them do videos in terms of things like that? Do we allow them to use for their FIED classes?
But that is addressed in the policy. It says that there are teachers who can ask. We change, if the policy says that administration has to approve, then those would be things that would be exceptions to, you know, there needs to be reason, why are we allowing this to be in the classroom?
And I would hope that it would be highly considered important, that it's, I, I think that there, it should be very seriously considered when they're making that decision of whether they're going to approve it or not. I think there are a lot of tools at their disposal and it, it may be the easiest one. You use the word easy a lot. I get it. It's the easiest one. But again, I'm going to argue that the cost outweighs the benefits.
And they had access to the G-chat, which is a part of the system, but that has now gone away. In terms of the G-chat is no longer available to them. So if we don't allow them to have it in passing in our lunch, so do we essentially just fill up the bathrooms in terms of everybody who wants to check their cellphone or check their messages or texts? They're just going to go into the restrooms and fill those up and that's where they'll do all of their cellphone use. I mean, kids are going to come up with ways to work around this. I mean, trust me, it's not going to be maybe obvious, but there's places they can hide in this building where they can check their cellphones and they're going to likely use them because they need it. I mean, they use it again, for multiple reasons in terms of work, family, whatever, to access text messages, which they're going to get throughout the day, so. To try to limit those for that from before school starts until school ends, that's a long time, so.
But I think the understanding is that this is like their job, right? Like if I sat at my job and I had my phone in front of me, I would probably not have a job. So I, I look at this as, yes, is my cellphone out? Yes, I'm an adult and I can make that choice. For my children, I make that choice for my children. My children don't have phones because that's my choice for them at this point in their life. I think that, I look at how many adults that I see that have problems with being addicted to their phones, that are constantly on their phones. And how are we setting these kids up for success? If we're letting them have these devices throughout the school day? And I, I mean, granted, whatever goes on outside of school is not part of the decision of what's being made here. But I think as a board, it's our job to make those tough choices. And in my opinion, I see this, again, as a, as a mental health professional, coming from a mental health perspective, I see this as being a positive thing for kids. I think there's other things that potentially we could talk about to just help foster that ability to socialize and have other alternatives for things to do besides the phone. But that's just my, my opinion is I see it as being, the, the good outweighs more of the cons.
Are there other devices out there though that would be, if they're not a smartphone, cellphone kind of thing? Are there other devices that are available or accessible for kids to use or not?
For what? For what purpose? What do you mean?
To do, again, simple phone calls and a simple text message.
But why do they need to do that during the school day? The focus should be on school, right? The, the focus should be school.
Oh, I understand that. But life goes on. There's like lots of things that happen in the course of a six, seven, eight hour day that, again, people are reaching out, trying to contact them, again, whether it's employers or parents or somebody wanting to reach them and contact them. And right now, we don't have, we, we took away all the payphones here in the, in the building. There's no payphones anymore. There's no place to access that. And I don't even know where they would be able to go in terms of office phones, or phones being available. Yeah, but there's not like a bank of phones down there that they can access, right?
Larry, my nephew didn't have a cellphone. He was here for three years. He made phone calls to me. He emailed me. I, I, we had no problem being in contact with each other. Probably too much contact.
Went to the office though to be able to reach that phone?
Dad's office.
I, I'm wondering if I could get some clarification from someone. Our Chromebooks that our students have, what are all the capabilities that our Chromebooks have?
Well, they now have Student Square, uh, which is the student side of Parent Square, which allows for, um, that's, that's really more with staff though. That's staff communication. They have Gmail, which is something that they could use to communicate with a parent or an employer through their student account. They wouldn't have access to their private email accounts. That's primarily it. Uh, with Parent Square coming on board and some of the functionality there and some of the issues and concerns with G-chat. We did eliminate G-chat this year. So really, to Larry's question about calls, of course, um, if somebody needs to make a phone call, they can go to the office and make a call. That's, I don't think that's ever an issue if a student needs to make a phone call home. But that's, that's really what you're talking about is stuff that they could access off their Chromebook.
Are they able to like make videos, anything of along those lines using their Chromebook?
There's opportunities and other ways that they can do videos, whether it's video cameras or those things. The, the phone is a very good tool for that. You know, to give an example, so the legitimate academic purpose, Jill's here, we've, you know, one of the things, and Brian, you know, was trying to navigate this and make sure he's doing things right. One of the, and I totally agree. She runs the 18 to 21-year-old program. Uh, those students, part of their, you know, it's about them learning to be independent. I said, well, it makes perfect sense to me that those adult students have full access to their phones. That's part of. So that's an example of a waiver. If students are doing, um, you know, marketing through social media, that one would seem to make sense that, that's, that's a tool that, for that class, that makes, that makes sense. We don't want to, I mean, at least this is our mindset in terms of how we approach it or how I, certainly how I think about it. I wouldn't want them to have a weaker tool to do the job right and do it well. Because, you know, yes, there might be something that can get you from A to B. But if you go out in like a professional context, if people are using smartphone technology to get, that's what you want students probably engage in. I think that's a pretty limited number of situations to where, but so it's probably like, again, it's the social media marketing class, the 18 to 21-year-old program. I don't know if the FIED piece, if that's necessary or not. They'd have, uh, you know, other fitness trackers that they can have. I don't know if the phone is necessary. That I'd have to hear more about, but I do know that that's.
Like a Fitbit or something, I mean.
Right, so there's Fitbits, there's different ways you can.
Smart watches.
Yeah, you can track and, and get that kind of information, so. But again, if you're creating the latitude in the policy that, um, and that a teacher can just reach out to their administrator and say, here's my purpose for why I'd like kids to have access to their, their smartphone. And it might be for a lesson or it might be for a course, um, then that allows that judgment to happen, which I always think it's good. I mean, I totally agree, there's a level of black and white that's important at times. And there's also a, a, the ability to apply some judgment that's also important.
So Becky, you said something about Parent Square. So a student could send a message via Parent Square to a parent?
No. They would use their Gmail.
They'd use their Gmail for that.
It'd be what?
They would use their Gmail for that.
Hey, so there's really two sides. There's Parent Square and there's Student Square. Uh, Student Square is really for students to communicate more with staff. And that has text message-like features and those kinds of things for communicating with groups and with staff. But there is, but in terms of communicating out, that would be their Gmail.
I think hanging out of what Brent was talking about, is there a way for us, and I know Mike, I'm going to kind of pick on you a little bit with this. We really didn't get a lot of exposure to what is included with Parent Square or now Student Square. Is there a way that we could get sort of a defined list of what's available on their Chromebooks? What's avail, in terms of the applications that allow us to be able to communicate? Could we get a side-by-side comparison of that so that we know if whatever they have capabilities on, on their smartphones is what is being replaced with Chromebooks and Parent Square and Gmail and whatever's there? I mean, would that be a possibility? Again, to address the question regarding the video and video quality on a Chromebook versus a video quality on a whoever's, who's got the latest smartphone here, cellphone, iPhone, whatever? I mean, the phones are very, very great in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can get you, I mean, I can tell you the, I mean, the basic thing is you're going to have, you're going to have email through your student email.
But I mean, I understand it Mike, but I think it would be helpful for us to have a side-by-side list before we start taking a lot of actions on this without really knowing what the capabilities are and what we are taking away from the students in terms of their environment here. With, I understand that part of it in terms of what's going on with it. But, um, I mean, that's my only point is it's like, okay, for high school level students, what can we do in terms of being able to make sure that they're given classroom tools, but also communication tools that might be important for them to have?
Yeah, the, the only thing that would be beyond the email is what Student Square is capable of doing. And, um, and we can certainly give that to you. I could just, but real quickly, as long as we're talking about it, I would say, if coaches or advisors move to Parent Square, which they're not, right now they're doing Sports U primarily for coaches and advisors, then anything that's done currently with Sports U, which is an app a lot of coaches use or, um, social media, those things could all be done through the Student Square and the Parent Square piece. But that's something we're still deciding. We said we're going to wait a year before we make a decision on those. So that's currently really, it would be an option, but it's currently not being used.
Okay, but just what you said again. So we have coaches and advisors. They use a totally different tool?
Typically, most of them are using what's called Sports U, which is.
Sports what?
Sports U.
So that's an app?
It's an app on your phone.
That under the banned policy, they would not have access to during the school day. And I'm okay with that.
Although, is Sports U, Sports U they can get to on their Chromebook, actually?
Oh, they can have email? Okay, so they will. They can have access to email.
So they actually can look at Sports U on their Chromebook.
I'd be hard-pressed for anything to not be good enough that email and phone calls isn't good enough.
Again, all I'm just asking in terms of, can we get a, a matrix of what's there, what's not there? So that we can make an informed decision. Cause right now, I'm feeling like I'm in the blind or in the dark as to what's there, what's not there, who's going to do what. And again, I would like to see the specific classes that are required in terms of using any kind of a cellphone or smartphone device so that we have that specifically laid out for us. And then we can sit down and make an informed decision about the actual device usage and what's there, so.
I have another question. So the email that our students have on Chromebooks, are their employers allowed to email them on that, that email account to say, hey, we've changed your hours tonight. We need you to report at five versus four? Would an employer be able to use that student email acco, okay? So I guess that kind of takes away the, the employer. So I guess that kind of takes away the, the employer issue, right?
I mean, my take on it is you're changing behavior that you're used to. So I communicate with my kids through email. That's, that's all they know, they don't have cellphones, so it's not a big deal. Like, I'm picking you up here, you're going over here, and they get time to check it, to look at it. Now, it's gonna be a change, right, it's gonna be an hour or two later, it's not gonna be an instant text they can check. But talking to parents and teachers, the goal is really removing distractions and getting more face to face interaction. Right, you, you, and I don't know if does it doesn't happen in the cafeteria, but certain, right, it's a new device that you're not on wifi at the school, you can get to anything you want. Right, they don't have to be on wifi, they can do whatever they want from that perspective. So I think I'm more towards the ban, it's gonna be uncomfortable, people aren't gonna like it, it's gonna be a change. But I think overall, like everyone said here, it's gonna have more benefit than negative outcomes.
And again, I think we're trying to control or address a portion of a student's day, a portion of a student's life. So as soon as, before they, when they get up in the morning, they can access it, when they go home, whatever social media, all of the stuff that's out there, that's gonna continue once they go home, weekends, all of those things. So how much of an impact are we really having during this particular period of time when they're actually on campus? And we put restrictions on it, but bullying and everything else, social media, everything else is out there, is going to continue. And then as Mike suggested before too, I mean, if this policy applies, does it apply to our eighteen to twenty-one year old program? Is that an exception that we're going to want to encourage and have them use the cellphones because it's part of their academic program, right? So how many students do you have in your eighteen to twenty-one?
Six.
Six students? Do they use their cellphones or smartphones all the time?
Absolutely, that's how we check the bus schedule, that's how we find items in the grocery store, that's how they use it to communicate, that's how they build relationships with people in other school districts as we meet them. They exchange phone numbers so they can text and kind of build those new relationships.
The impact here is that there's less distractions so that the kids, when they're coming here, they're focused on school. That's the impact.
And I would argue that they develop better social communication skills. Hannah's shaking her head at that, I'd just like to point it out.
And, and, and you know, as you said, Mike, um, for those students, they are adults. So going back to that word exception again, but maybe it's okay to make an exception for that small, six students that are adults.
Well, we've allowed for exceptions though, we've allowed for exceptions, we would, I'm, I would like to have it go through administration. I would prefer not to have the teachers be able to make the exceptions. We can discuss that if you have concerns about that, but I would prefer that it be centralized than each teacher being allowed to make that decision.
I just worry if that, does that open it up to eighteen year old seniors?
You're right. I was thinking that too.
You're right. That's true.
What I would say is, I mean, currently what the rules are that's in the handbook, which I think is pretty manageable, um, is if there is a legitimate educational purpose and that with administrative approval, basically. So eighteen to twenty-one year old program is something that's approved because of a legitimate academic purpose. Um, just because you're, that doesn't mean just because if you're someone else who's eighteen.
Right.
That you're not in that program. That's a, that's a very specific program.
Yeah, it's not just because you're a senior, you're part of that specific program and you are an adult.
So whether, so whether it's whatever you decide to do, if it's among these two options and the one kind of reflecting what's right now in place, uh, certainly would be my recommendation that you maintain that flexibility for, um, whether it be teachers and administration or administration, um, at, you know, to consider a teacher request for, um, those, uh, exceptions. I would encourage you to continue to include that in the policy because I, I do think, you know, um, former high school principal used to say it all the time, we get paid to make the gray area decisions and some, we have to do that. You know, there's, there's, there's the rule and then there's the times where the rule doesn't always make sense. And if the rule doesn't make sense, having some latitude to make a different decision, I think is really helpful. Um, so that's just something I would encourage that you would continue to include in the policy.
So one other question to add on top of that, so we know that there's, okay, so the eighteen to twenty-one year old group potentially gets it. We know that potentially the students that might be, um, diabetic and they use the devices in terms of their blood sugar monitoring, so that would be on the list. Are there other things that would be out there if there's in an IEP or a 504? Do we have any way of knowing the number of students that would have something built into their IEPs or 504s that would require them to use a smartphone with certain apps on it or to be able to use it as a calming device? Or being able to use it to help them if they're dyslexic and they need, uh, some help reading an article or something? Because that's an assistive aid, if you will, I assume that it might be built into an IEP. So are those things something, again, can we get any data on this? Because we've got about eight hundred students here in the high school or eight hundred and fifty, whatever it is. Uh, that it would be nice to know how many of those exceptions are we going to have? What's that?
Seven.
That's it, for seven for?
Five oh fours.
Okay, no IEPs?
Not that I'm aware of, um, I think, uh, I'd be curious about one particular hearing impaired. I don't know whether there's a device that would be connected to a smartphone or not.
Yeah, and Larry, just to give some context, in the seven years I was the principal at the middle school, where we did, phones were not allowed, um, in those seven years, whether you look at student health needs, 504s, IEPs, I could probably count on one hand in those seven years, how many students had exceptions to the, the middle school ban?
And Larry, the policy does allow for IEP as one of the exceptions. And I'll go back to the McMonaco teacher that I talked to, the limited number of people that had diabetes managed that very, I want to use the word professionally, maturely maybe is a better word, very maturely, they used their phone as quickly or as, as much as they needed, but just as quickly and as discreetly as needed, and then they put it away. It wasn't like they were flaunting the phones out, I'm checking my sugar levels, they did what they needed to do and they put it away.
Yeah, and there could be, uh, you know, it's conceivable, cer, it's, it's gonna be a really hard thing to answer, Larry, because it's gonna depend on who, what the needs are for the kids at that given time. So there might be a year where no one needs something tied to some assistive technology and there could be a year where a handful uh, might have a legitimate reason through an IEP or a 504 to have some accommodation. I don't, I, I think the examples you've heard between with Brian and Anthony is it's not a lot. Um, and again, it's for whatever that purpose is. So if I have, if I need my phone for glucose monitoring, that doesn't mean I get to sit on my, you know, TikTok account all day because I'm, I need my phone, I mean, that wouldn't be part of the deal, right? It's for your glucose monitor, so, um, so that, that piece, and I think that's, that's, again, gets back to our reason. There's, there's an, there's an important place for exceptions and I, I think these cover some of those.
Brian, a few minutes ago, I think you were gonna say some, yeah.
What? What, what, what does a ban mean, like what does that in practicality look like?
Bell to bell, can't be seen.
So they can bring them to school, we just would never see them outside of when they're walking in the building and walking out?
This policy, Brian, would basically take what you currently have enforced in school and eliminate lunch and passing times.
But it would allow, should there be some security risk that occurs, those students could, could pull their device out. Um, because I know that has, I've had a few parents catch me at the grocery store and verbalize that. But that is one of our exceptions is if there was a security risk.
Well, that definitely enforcing this policy would not be the priority at that time. But I also hope the priority at that time is the student listening to the instructions being given them by the teacher and not them texting their parents.
Right.
So.
One clarifying question with the smartwatch, right? That makes a little bit more challenging, because is it everything, anything with a screen on it? Cause there's a lot of watches that aren't connected to anything, you know, around the wrist, they're hard to see. Some do have cells, some are tied to a phone, so they wouldn't work, but kind of what, you know, that puts a little bit of onus on, right, those teachers once again to lock them, tell them in the locker.
It's a good point as well, I mean, and, and that's only gonna get more nuanced because the wearable technology thing, you know, it's gonna continue to evolve and there's gonna be, so right now, um, you know, especially through eighth grade, that they're not allowed to have the smartwatches or those things either. Um, uh, but, you know, there's smart glasses, there's all kinds of things. So there are devices and things, it, again, it's about the engagement with, with those things, I think is ultimately what's gonna trigger some enforcement. Um, but right, there's gonna be something a year or two from now that's maybe different, you know, that in terms of a wearable technology, that can always be an issue.
Which is why we use the term personal communication device, correct? We're not just saying cellphones.
Our practical approach to that, because we're not gonna inspect everybody's watch, it could be a regular watch, it could be a smartwatch, but you know, if I'm checking the time, that's pretty obvious. If I'm, you know, doing that, no, I'm interacting with it. So at that point, uh, we have already confiscated some, uh, smartwatches and that's, and that's the, it's all the same level. So whether it's a phone, a smartwatch, your earbuds, that's love, that's your first offense. And then your second offense, doesn't matter if it's a smartwatch this time and a phone next time, it's just a personal communication device, so. It's been our, that's been our, the way we've tried to implement that recently.
Thank you.
So, I mean, given that we started the school year, and the school year we started out with student handbooks. Again, the student handbooks for the PLE, Horizon and ASA were very explicit, they were totally banned there. But the high school, we basically built in what is currently practiced and I think what's in our current restricted version, right? So if we go ahead with this reasonably, what would be the quickest we could roll this out and?
Um, my, you know, my, my preference, uh, just for, for ease of implementation would be if you go, if you move to, uh, applying to the high school, what you have in place through K eight right now is to look at the fall of twenty-six. The next, uh, best option would be at semester. Um, I would, I would definitely give some of that time, um, versus abruptly changing in, at midterm so that there's kind of a break and you can communicate and you can, uh, prepare for it. Um, so, and I'd invite Brian to, to comment of what his thoughts are. But just thinking like a, you know, previous high school administrator, it's, uh, helpful to start a year, uh, in that position. Um, but certainly a, a change could be made sooner if that's what you all determine.
Right, thoughts?
You guys make your decision and tell me when I'm supposed to start it and I will send a text to all the students and say where to start.
I'll just put it out there and say, I think putting it off till next fall is kind of putting off the inevitable. Um, you know, if we could make, you know, we have the break for Christmas, so we come back and we, we get communication out there before Christmas, so students know when they come back from Christmas break, this is it. Um, this is how we're doing it going forward. I don't know, what do others feel about that?
I agree with that, or when is semester, is it?
Yeah, semester.
Mid-January?
Yeah.
Twenty-first, twenty.
I mean, you could do it at, I mean, there's nothing magical about that, you could do it after the holiday break too. I mean, there's, it's a, it's a break, so it kind of gives you something to get, say, all right, twenty twenty-six.
Or it could be semester, I mean, it's close to.
Yeah.
I kind of like the idea of the break, doing it like January second or whatever the date is we're coming back, but I, I don't feel super strongly about that.
And it's not, the fact that, you know, what's currently in place of the handbook, I mean, you're eighty percent of the way there already, so.
Is there any other wording policy, wording to the changes in the ban policy?
The only one is the, the exception, um, under Roman numeral two prohibited use. And then the, the third paragraph, it says accept as authorized by a teacher. I would like that to only say accept as authorized by administrator or IEP team. I would like the teachers to have to get approval from the administrator.
And I, if I'm correct, I do believe that the policy at the middle school, it, it is just the admin, with administrative approval.
And that's, that's what we have in place now.
Okay.
Uh, this year.
Okay.
So that's already, I think I've gotten four requests, the AP request is a pretty common one at this point, the eighteen to twenty-one year old program, so. Um, for, uh, social media use, in fact, we actually have, wow, your, your student here is two of those exceptions, three? What was the third one?
Wrestling, but I don't know if that was put on there yet.
Oh, yeah, I haven't gotten that one yet. Um, but for the purposes of capturing some social media to decide with, uh, tied to serving others and.
Student council.
Student council, thank you. Um, so what we did is we actually bought a bunch of bright green lanyards and an ID badge, kind of like a press pass. So if a student is out doing what they have been instructed to do by the teacher out in the hallways, then we don't have a negative interaction because we're like, oh, you have your phone, and then we scoop in cause they have this really ugly lanyard that's not the color of our school. Um, so it'd be very noticeable. So that's our approach to how we will manage some of those exceptions and, and keep it, you know, operational.
Those be things that could be added as a procedure to the policy that we have so that we understand some of that as well. And, and my concern when I talked to Mike about this originally was, I want this policy to be really, really, really clear, very explicit. Take out the gray zone stuff, take out the subjective judgment in terms of as much as we can. Because if we're gonna go forward with it, let's not, let's be as clear as we can to the students, as clear as we can to the parents and to the teachers. So that they know exactly what's allowed and what's not allowed and what, from what time to what time, so.
Well, I agree with you, Larry, in concept, but we have a pretty bland statement that allows exceptions.
Oh, no, I understand.
So.
I want to say thank you, Brian, for the ugly green lanyard, because I think that's really helpful in the fact that then you don't have students that see what they see and make an assumption, an assumption that they're getting favored or whatever. No, this was pre-approved use of the phone, so although it might be ugly to wear, I, I want to say thank you. I think that was a really good decision, so.
So then based on, um, Stacy's note from Roman numeral two, paragraph three, then that would also be Roman numeral three, bullet two, bullet two, we'd remove teacher and it'd just be administrator.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ashley, where's the, where's the?
Yeah, the other headphone earbud? Thing that I was looking to change, Mike, was the, um, the headphones, like only headphones, no exceptions for earbuds.
You, you were saying like wired headphones?
Yeah.
Like the kids have a, and that's under Roman numeral one, bullet three?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Wired allows us to ensure they're using the school device and not potentially kind of.
Yeah, so that was our thought as well.
That was my concern.
Yeah.
There are five oh four exceptions that, uh, are specific earbuds that an audiologist, uh, s, kind of prescribed, if you will, that are noise canceling for the purpose of drowning out other noise. Um, so those are things we will have to make an exception for, but it's documented and it's pretty easy to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which again, I think that's under the IEP five oh four.
Exception.
Do you want to add that language to the headphone line then, the bullet?
Yeah.
Just as an IP guy, I will tell you, be wor, I, only thing I'm worried about that is, uh, they're taking audio ports out of computers. It's one of the things that they're trying to get rid of, so you may have an issue.
In the future?
In the very near future with a wired device, just sorry.
Yeah, no, I think you might be right about that.
But I guess I was thinking too, just not the earbuds, but could they, like headphone, uh, which I guess those would still be Bluetooth that you could still connect to.
They are starting to sell, uh, to C, C to headphones, so if the newer Chromebooks do that, it's just a different, it's a C plus.
Across that bridge.
Well, um, if there's no more discussion, um, are we ready to take a vote on which policy we'd like to proceed forward with?
Well, typically we do it as a second read, right? I mean, when we.
We're not approving it, we're just eliminating one policy.
We're moving one to a second read. So if, if we're all okay with that, can I get a motion for this vote?
A move to vote on which policy we want to proceed with between the ban and the restriction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Now, I would like to take, um, a raised hand vote between the two policies. All in favor of the restricted draft, please raise your hand.
Or did we just vote on?
No, we voted that we're gonna do this.
You voted to take a vote.
Right.
You voted to, to take a vote.
Now, this is the vote ver, unrestricted versus banned. So anyone in favor of the restricted policy, please raise your right hand. All right? All those in favor of the banned draft, please raise your right hand. Duly noted, so it looks like we will move forward with the second. Duly noted, so it looks like we will move forward with the second read on the banned use version.
So Tammy, I have the edits, so with the edits, right? That you shared, so we'd put that in the, for the consent agenda version for the next meeting, okay?
Yeah.
And the intended timeline for implementation would be as of twenty twenty six, so like when they return from the break, it's twenty twenty six, so the new year.
So the vote on passing the policy will be at the next meeting?
It'd be part of the consent agenda.
Yes.
And you can always, if you want to have more discussion, you know, you could pull that piece, the consent agenda out, if you wanted to talk a little more.
Could we actually do that in advance and say, let's have it as a separate item?
Sure can, yeah. You want it as a, you want it as an old business, maybe an old business standalone item? So Tammy, on that next, yeah, agenda, have that as an old business item.
I just wanted to say thank you everyone for the robust discussion, I really appreciate it, the openness and the transparency.
Especially to the students, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and Brian as well, much appreciated.
And another, just to make sure I'm giving you guys everything that you want, Larry, you had asked for, would you like us to provide more information with that, kind of what the communication?
It would be a little bit helpful in terms of, again, maybe explaining to folks that what we.
What you can do here.
May receive it as being things that we're taking away, but if it's all covered in other applications and particularly of parent square, student square, all that stuff's out there, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, I'm going to ask Jeff Behrens. Yeah, that's a tough one, right, buddy?
You've got a lot of good news to report.
Yep, Jeff is going to present us the athletics and activities report, thanks Jeff.
Can I, wait, I'm sorry to stop Jeff here, did we, did you guys ever take a motion then to accept the rest of the policy committees? Did that happen? I don't think you did.
Oh, we didn't, okay, sorry, hold on a second.
Just to move that to the.
Could I, could I get a motion to accept the rest of the policies presented?
Again, we don't vote on.
Yeah, I guess you don't, you don't, never mind, you don't need to.
No, because this is first read.
Because if there's no objection, it just moves ahead, never mind.
Sorry.
My bad, I'm sorry.
Okay, now.
All right, all right, yeah, so try to lighten up the mood a little bit here. So usually I come to you guys in June, June or July to present this, but understanding you guys were pretty full this summer, doing this today, so you guys were provided with the athletic and the activities, I'll start with the athletics report. Since you guys had it, I'm not going to go through every single thing, I just wanted to do, I just want to highlight some of the main pieces. Starting in the athletic report, starting last year, I started putting in a little bit more of kind of what our athletic department is about, and so the second, or actually the third page, when we have the board policy, the athletic department philosophy, mission, vision, purpose, that's what we call our athletic department narrative, and the reason I bring it up is because I, I really think that this is something that sets our athletic department apart from a lot of athletic departments in the country. Specifically, when you get to the core principles, you know, when you walk into, a lot of athletic departments, a lot of schools have core principles, and it's a poster on the wall and it says like perseverance, grit, determination, things like that. What sets us apart a little bit is we have our, our core principles, but we also have a definition, so, you know, our core principle is to compete, to maximize our performance by applying skills, techniques and strategies, that's the definition of that core principle. And then taking it one step further, we have measures of success. How do we know when our student athletes have gained the ability to compete? Well, when they have passion, pride, enthusiasm and toughness, for example. So, so I think this is, this is one thing that I'm really trying to tell our story a little bit louder, is our athletic department narrative. We expanded it a little bit last year and we've built upon it a little bit more this year, when we come to standards, in our department, we have three standards that we are really relying on, the first one is best as a standard, and it's not that you have to be the best, it's about giving your best effort, are you coming today with your best effort and giving your best each and every day? Second standard is continuous growth, I am a very firm believer in always growing, continuous learning, professional development and so on, and so are we always learning? Are we always growing as athletes, are we always growing as coaches? So that is our second standard, and then our third standard is elite professionalism. Are we doing our job at the best that we can do, are we being good role models for the student athletes in our programs, and, and I guess representing Pewalki High School, Pewalki Athletic Department in the best way? So those are, are the newest additions to, to our athletic department narrative. So jumping into some of the numbers, the first one right off the bat, participation rate sixty-six percent. To put that in perspective, most schools as, as an AD, like we shoot for sixty percent, sixty percent is like, if you can get sixty percent of your student body participating in athletics, that is a huge number. We had sixty-six last year, which was a full ten percentage points above the previous year, so that, that was really awesome. I broke, we broke it down into fall, winter, spring, one sport, two sport, three sport, and then male students versus female students. Jumping in just to a couple of the celebrations, boys volleyball, first conference championship in school history last year, that's only in its fourth year of existence, we just started the boys volleyball program now five years ago, so in the fourth year, they went ahead and won their first conference championship. For boys golf, the tournament conference championship is unofficial, but I put it in here, it was a very rainy, cold, stormy day, and most of the teams in the conference decided to bail, but our boys wanted to keep going and wanted to, wanted to beat Wisco and, and so they went out there and they, they did. So Wisco and Pewalki basically marched out there in the sideways rain and, and still competed and finished. Let's see, we have state qualifiers in, on the individual side, we had eighteen state qualifiers, highlighted by Caleb Katie, becoming the fifth state championship, or state champion in Pewalki wrestling history. Moving down to significant accomplishments, we had six Woodland Conference Players of the Year in their sport, our conference has twenty conference sponsored sports, so in six of those sports, we had what was voted as the best athlete in that sport. We had fourteen all-state athletes, two athletes who were the, voted the best athlete in their sport in the state of Wisconsin, Amy Tyrion was Miss Basketball, she was also a Gatorade Player of the Year finalist, and she was McDonald's All-American nominee, and then Ober, Owen Doberstein was the Division Two State Player of the Year for, for baseball. Eighteen student athletes signed their letters of intent to continue playing their sport at the collegiate level. Our athletic awards, if you're unaware, we have an athletic awards night in May, the middle of May, it's a Sunday night, and we give out these coach voted upon awards. Ella Opie, I'll highlight Ella, Ella became the ninth WIA Scholar Athlete for Pewalki High School, so she was one of thirty-two student athletes in the state to earn that award. Then we get into the scholar piece, scholar athlete piece of this, and these numbers are staggering. Going all the way down to the fall sport, so girls volleyball had the highest GPA, team GPA, they had fifty-six girls out for volleyball and the average GPA out of all fifty-six was three point nine five. That is incredible, incredible. For the winter, our highest team GPA was the girls basketball team with a three point eight four, and in the spring, girls soccer had the highest GPA with a three point seven nine, and they were also, were the state runner-up, so they, they got it done on the field and in the classroom. And then what's really impressive, and this blows my mind every single year that, that I do this, calculating the average GPA of all of our student athletes, so we had eight hundred and thirteen student athletes last year, and the average GPA was three point five nine, that was up from three point five six the previous year.
Just need that hundredth of a point.
Yeah.
To that nice even three six.
Right.
Yeah.
I highlighted coach professional development, we have a number of our coaches that participate in their state association clinics, they go to the clinics, hear from other coaches, and again, continuously grow as a coach. Some notable coach accomplishments, several coaches were voted Coach of the Year in their sport. Getting into the appendix, appendices, the first appendix is the athletic training report, one thing to note is our concussions were slightly up, I think we had thirty-two concussions last year, we had thirty-eight this year, that's one number that we always kind of keep an eye on and work closely with Rihanna. We also had several ACL tears, specifically in the females last year, and again, that's something that Rihanna, along with our strength and performance coach, Joe Grabo, continuously collaborate with and try to figure out ways that we can minimize that number. Appendix two is just the athletic participation numbers over the eight years that I've been here, or seven years, this is my eighth. One thing to note, or a couple of things to note, our female numbers enrollment wise continue to be more than male, and the reason I mention that is because that has some pretty significant implications when it comes to Title IX. Title IX is the underrepresented gender, which in our case, in the last couple of years, has been the male, males in our school. However, even if, even if the female was the underrepresented gender, we are still in compliance with Title IX, that's one thing that I continuously audit every year. Under fall participation numbers, we have continuously grown over the last four years, five, five years, winter numbers have grown over the last three years, and then spring numbers have also continuously grown, actually, we went down a little bit in spring, a couple percent, tenth of a percentage point. Then I get into, I list all the all-conference winners, first team, second team by, by season, in total, we had forty first-team all-conference winners and fifty-five second-team all-conference winners, and then I finish out this report by giving the standings for all the different sports. As I've talked about in the past, the last piece of this report is what I call our all-sport standings in our conference, this is unofficial, this is something that I just do on my own, but really what it does is it measures all the schools in our conference and really see, and really determines who had the best year. I did make a mistake in your report and I put up this number one, just because it's just been habit, we actually were, we were beat out by Wisconsin Lutheran, they edged us out by a couple, by a couple hundreds of a, of a point, so. We have been on top of that for the last several years and, and we'll hope to knock Wisconsin off, Wisconsin Lutheran back off.
Which sport, Jeff?
So it's all sports, so what I do is I.
I got you.
Yeah, I give the, the standings and then divide that by the number of sports that they offer in each season and then, and then total.
Got it.
Any questions on the athletic report?
Relative to the, I think the football team got caught up in the transition to the different classic conference, right?
Okay.
Is that, how has that affected the participation and?
Our number, our football numbers are down a little bit, but it's hard to say if that's related to Classic Eight Conference.
Because they got beat up pretty badly last year with.
Because we, yeah, we had a couple of athletes that didn't come out because of injuries in other sports, and then a couple of athletes that decided not to play football because they wanted to concentrate on another sport.
I think what it was, Friday night was forty-eight to seven, mosquito.
Forty-nine, seven, yeah.
I mean, they were actually in the continuous clock almost in the.
In the first half, yeah.
First half, yeah.
Yep, yep, thanks Larry. Trying to forget that.
Is there any chance that that will change back?
It is, we, next year we go back to our, our previous conference, yeah, with schools that are still bigger, but at least a couple are still bigger, but more, more comfortable.
I don't know if you highlighted this, I think you did it in our girls soccer team, but maybe did you?
I, I mentioned it, yeah, just in the GPA, but yeah, state runner-up last year.
First time ever.
Yeah. Any other questions, athletic report?
Thanks for being a number cruncher, I love numbers.
Sure. All right, activities report, this will be really quick, we had thirty-two different activities last year, we went through and listed the participation, and the one that I failed to put in here, it was sailing club, I forgot to, to include sailing club, but, so thirty-two different activities, one thousand two hundred and fifty participants, and then broke it down, how many students are involved in one activity, all the way down to, we had two students involved in nine different activities, not including any athletics, although those, both of those two were out for athletics. Couple celebrations, just talking about, just to kind of break it down a little bit, we have basically three different avenues of, of activity, in our activities department, we have social activities, clubs or organizations, we have service, and then we have competitive. And so in the competitive side, whether it be academic or rock climbing or mountain biking, Brian left, so we have just a variety of three different categories of activities, so I kind of broke it down, who went to regional competitions, were state qualifiers, and then some national qualifiers. The biggest thing is on the last page, and this is, like I almost fell out of my chair when, when I came across this number, but we had, let me preface this, when I have our open house, freshman orientation, those types of things, the, the whole purpose of our activities program is to get kids involved in something, because we know that when they get involved, their chance of success increases dramatically. And so we always say we're shooting for a hundred percent, we want to get a hundred percent, but knowing that we're, we're probably not going to reach every single student, we almost did, ninety-three percent of our students were involved in something, I have never seen a number like that, and so that was just really, really incredible, really, really awesome, and it almost like, to be honest, when I've said that our goal is one hundred, I've just always had in my mind that, yeah, we're never going to get hit a hundred, and now seeing ninety-three, it's like, well, maybe we can, maybe there's a way, and so, so we're going to strive and, and do that, we have a couple club requests, new club requests that are in the pipeline right now, we have a process on how we approve new clubs, but if, if it looks like we might be able to reach a couple other students, then that would, that would weigh heavy in, in that approval process, but, and then I broke it down, really the impact on overall learning when students are involved in something. So I broke it down, students who have participated in only athletics and no clubs, activities or organizations, you can see what three point six eight was the GPA, students who participated in activities only and no athletics, three point eight one, students who participated in both, three point seven six, and then students who didn't, those few students who didn't participate in athletics or activities, that's the lowest GPA group and that's a three point four five, so. That's the activities report, any questions on that?
I have actually two, Jeff.
Yeah.
So there's a one called Pewalki Live, it looks like there's one student involved in that.
Yeah.
So what is Pewalki Live?
Live music production, so, so they produce live, live music, that number dropped during the year, Mr. Kent and Mrs. Mitchell co-advised that, they've gone to like Brewers Two and played live events in the past, but Kate really does a really good job of taking the students that are involved in that club and just letting them go with their interest and where they want to go with it, it's, yeah, it's kind of neat.
Okay, now the second question I add, just because it's, again, we have national qualifiers for the FCC LA, the HOSA and FBLA. I mean, what does that signify?
So they did well enough at their state competition that they earned a spot at the national competition, we don't fund those, so that's on, if they go to the national, that's on their, their cost, but we had some students who took advantage of that in all of those organizations and went to their national competition over the summer.
Well, it's another level of.
Another level, yeah. We are hosting the FBLA state competition this year, which will be a very big event, basically probably taking up most of our campus, and that is in February, I think.
Question for you, just, you know, that ninety-three percent, ninety-three percent number is, is awesome, and this just occurred to me, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but have we thought about surveying that seven percent and seeing what? Then my second question is, have you had any interest in esports?
So we send out a survey every spring to the whole student body and it asks basically, are we meeting your needs and, and your interests? It's an interest survey. We list what we have. We also list a whole bunch of other examples that we don't have. And we basically say, are you involved in something? How many different things are you involved in? And then we also ask, is there anything that we're not offering that you might be interested in? Esports is specifically mentioned on there and it just never has come back with an interest level high enough to pursue it. And I've actually, I've never had any students, I mentioned that we have a couple requests to start a club right now. I've actually had never had a student come forward and say, hey, I really want to start esports.
Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
And then the last two pieces are just no changes. Our high school athletic and activities code of conduct, there were no changes made to that. And then basically, it's called the family athletic handbook at, at AESA, but it's essentially the athletic code for the middle school and there are no changes to that.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
All right.
It's impressive.
Thank you. It's, we have an impressive group of, of students that do amazing things. Pretty fun to sit in my seat sometimes.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Jeff, you're not sitting in your seat very often, though.
All right, thank you.
All right, next, we have a construction progress and design update. Mike?
Yeah, and I'm gonna kick it over to John and John. Things are going really well. And so I won't belabor the point. I'll turn it over to them. They're the ones that attend all the trailer meetings, so they can give you the. They can give you the update.
So welcome and thanks for the opportunity to update on, on where the progress is on these projects. These are significant. This is a referendum that was approved in the district, twenty-eight and a half million dollars to make a significant impact on particularly the career and technical education program that we're offering in the district. If you think back over the last year, year and a half, almost, yeah, year and a half now. All of the presentations we've done to the board started off going through all the design phases to make sure that you're aware of, here's what this is looking like, here's the concept, and here's the impact it could have on the instructional program, how that was tied into the curriculum development process to make sure that we were meeting the needs of the program, the programmatic needs that we had. And then finally, from the start of the construction, taking on tours, being able to take a look at the spaces as they're completed. So this progress update, again, happens roughly quarterly. We'll, we'll pull it together and give you an update and give you an idea of where, where these projects are heading. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to John to talk about the actual construction pieces and some of the progress that's going on there.
All right, just a quick little snapshot of the phases. Tried to do two different graphics here. I know it looks a little funky, but the new floor plan of the high school is, is more in landscape than it is in portrait. So we tried to, I tried to flip it around here for you. So on the left-hand side, so phase one is complete. Phase three is complete and phase four is complete. They are currently working on phase two and that's scheduled to be completed at the end of December here. Hopefully for a move-in right around winter break. And then phase two, once that is complete, we'll be able to relocate the classes that are in phase five into the new space. And then that'll be remodeled. And then after we move into phase five, phase six, well, phase six will be moving into phase five, those locations, and then that'll be remodeled. And phase five and phase six, those would be projected to be completed in January, February, March, April, and hopefully up relatively soon, shortly after spring break. So there's just a quick little snapshot from the phases standpoint. And again, phase one fully open and operational from the athletic portion of this project. And then for the start of school, so the fitness center, you can see it on the top picture there. Multi-purpose room is in the bottom portion. There's also a health classroom that is on the westward facing wall just to the left of the, or just to north of the new entrance. And then also you'll see a training room, which is located between the health classroom and the, sorry, health classroom and the storage area, or it's next to the storage area right there. So you can kind of see it on the, kind of the top left portion of the phase one. That's where it's located in the bottom portion of the phase one. Again, most of you have been in them, however, the people that are watching online, the fitness center and the multi-purpose room are on the bottom of the graphic. Also, you see the girls' team locker room. That is also open and operational. Only thing that we're waiting on just from a lead time standpoint is lockers. They're into being a long lead time on lockers, so we're projected to have those at the end of this month and then those will be installed once they are received. And that'll be fully complete, otherwise we're just waiting on lockers is that portion. The new culinary room, that is on the right-hand side of the picture here. And then also the life skills room. That's the former culinary room. And again, that goes back to, that was phase four. So the phase four was the old culinary and that turned into a new life skills room. So we, we've been able to get those set up and operational for the start of school, a little bit of nip-tuck just to get in place and get everything moved in, but they're, they're open and, and running in those spaces right now.
Keep going in.
Yep, all right. So from the phase two, so again, that's that, the career and technical education and whole steam area that they're working on right now. So that'll be, that includes the two D and three D art classrooms, the manufacturing and metal space, construction and wood shop space, the innovation center, innovation hub, or whatever it ends up being called officially, and also the project weight room. And then we also have a family consumer science classroom as well that'll be in that, in that space. So they are humming right along in those spaces, pouring a lot of concrete, getting walls set. They're, they're going, going at it for that entire phase two portion of this project.
So I think one of the things we're remiss maybe is just the appreciation for the flexibility of the high school staff. We're talking about a significant disruption in the, in the delivery of the instructional program, that they've been very agile and kicked in when necessary, especially Labor Day weekend. We talk about projects being completed. They're completed as to the point of occupancy when we get into these, into these projects. We still have to work out a lot of the invoicing and some of the backorder items, some of the furniture and equipment that goes, goes into those areas, still going to be cleaned up by the final completion date in February to March of, of all of the work. Give you an idea of financially where we're at, if we look at each of the components, these are the components that were discussed in the referendum. Also with the, in the question was other items as identified in the long-term capital projects plan that have the potential to be addressed in the scope of this, of this work. Currently, the career and technical education is the largest piece that was in there. Total budget for that, a little over twenty-three million dollars. We're at about sixty-two percent, sixty-three percent that has been invoiced as of August thirtieth, through August thirtieth. The two roofing projects, same situation. Those roofs are complete now. We anticipate final invoicing and final walkthrough inspection, completion of all punchless items to be done by the end of September. But, so those roofs will be completed, but as of the end of August, the invoicing gone there is about thirty-eight percent on PLE, twenty-six percent, twenty-seven percent on Horizon. The HPAC improvements, significant equipment costs on these things for the large air handling units and rooftop units that are included in there. We're at about eighty percent, eighty-one percent has been invoiced and paid out on those. The remaining portion is programming and install and completing the invoicing. We anticipate that being done by end of September into October for final invoicing on that. The flooring and the campus solar are both projects that we earmarked from the start because of capacity to have those done in the summer of 2026. Those will all be bid out this fall and contracts awarded to be able to, to have the work done as soon as we're able to after winter, as we get into spring in the spaces where we can get the work done. So overall, we're about fifty-eight percent of the work towards, towards the referendum budget has been expended through, or accounted for through the end of August. So back in May, we addressed with the board what are a couple of other capital projects that we anticipate we will have resources available for and you gave us the permission to move forward with the, with the construction and the bidding on these, on these additional projects. These include the replacement of the turf on the football field. So that is going to be bid out this fall also for completion in the summer of 2026, along with the resurfacing of the track, or structural spray of the track surface. And then the Makerspace and additional classroom renovations over at Horizon Elementary School. So we'll anticipate getting those bid out and contracts awarded so that work can begin again, right away in the spring to have as little impact on any instructional pieces that we have. Future planning, and this is a plan we've discussed already in May with you. We've had those three additional projects. As we get financially now through all of the largest scope, the largest portion of this is the CTE expansion. If there's proceeds remaining that we anticipate at closeout or a close to closeout in December, we'll be looking at an additional list of what are some of those other things off the long-range capital projects plan that is always presented to the board in December of each year. What are those items then that we feel in the next three to five years are going to be the highest priority or need to be done from an operational standpoint that we can still address with any additional proceeds? So we'll present that to the board with the opportunity to use any additional proceeds that we have or remaining proceeds from the projects to address that next layer of capital improvements that we anticipate being necessary in the next three to five years. We talk about April twenty-six closeout. So in last fall, last December, January, the board approved the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price. That represents the construction contract for the CTE spaces and the renovations that are in all of the phases combined. So that sets the maximum that we're going, we would be paying out. You close that out, it essentially ends that contract or that, that component with our general contractor and our architect. That we anticipate being able to do by April of 2026. The remaining projects, we're managing in-house or we're managing under a separate contract with those entities. And yes, Mike reminded me that I need a new picture for this. This is intentional. So from two thousand and seven until now, how far this campus has come, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and with some of the changes in the facilities that you can see on that, on the photograph of the campus. Are there any questions?
Just reiterate for me, what is the final phase? What area is that, that's the last area that'll be finished?
So currently, if you look at what is currently the graphics room?
Uh huh.
In.
Phase six.
Phase six. I can't see it up here. The light blue on the diagram, that is the current graphics room. That would be the last space that moves and vacates. The renovation in there will be basically dividing that room and creating another classroom and a resource space far into the hallway and downstairs.
And the, and that they'll be moving from there into phase five. So graphics will be relocated to the phase five space. Which are the current art rooms, but they're going to be vacated when they go into the new addition. Yep. And that'll be done about the same time that the Horizon renovation and the roofs and those things.
Graphics room should be, so the anticipation is phase two will be completed to be able to occupy by December, by end of December. The renovation work in phase five is relatively small, about four to five weeks. So by the end of January, that'll be done. The timeframe for the phase six renovations is about two weeks, two to three weeks. So logistically, by the end of February, early March, we anticipate having all of phase six completed.
So really the, the last of it will be the, the stuff in the summer of twenty-sixth, the flooring at Horizon, the solar install, the renovation of Makerspace Library at Horizon.
Yeah, yeah. Solar and the carpet will be the last, the flooring and the solar will be the last piece.
And the turf and structural spray, that's next summer.
Yep.
As well.
Yeah, some of them we have to wait until our programming is done. So until track is done, we can't take the track and the field down.
And also just from a sequencing standpoint, too, goal is to try and do the turf first and then do a structural spray on the track so you don't have to build a ramp or have to worry about covering the track and then try and do turf. And so it's just sequencing is always a, a challenge and opportunity.
So are we going to, once this is complete and all the furniture and the decor is in place, are we going to have an open house to showcase this beautiful space to our community?
Yeah, I've already had some conversations with Miranda about that. So there'd be, yeah, ribbon cutting event planned, you know, probably in the spring. We'd probably look at something in May. Although I have thought it might be, you know, we could even have like a, just a less involved open house even this fall for the fitness areas if people wanted to come in and see it. But yeah, the, we are planning a full event once everything's all done.
That's exciting.
We probably wouldn't have the Horizon stuff done yet at that point, but we'd have everything else done, so.
That's exciting stuff.
And I would say if, I think, I don't know, maybe all of you have been through. If you haven't been, be happy to walk you through the fitness center and those areas after the meeting if you would like.
Thanks for all you do, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just compliment these two guys. I mean, it's a, it's not a less workload, it's a lower workload when this happens and, and they both do a ton with this, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
John, could I put in a work order? Can we get our chairs oiled?
Squeaky wheel gets greased.
I'm wondering what it sounds like online every time I move.
They're a little creaky.
All right, moving right along, start of school report.
Yeah, this is pretty brief, just, you know, and I'd invite Anthony or John to jump in if they got anything to add. But I would say a very smooth start to the year. Just like to recognize some people were, we were fully staffed and, tip of the cap to Colin Jacobs and our principals and Tony Stranky and everybody that's been involved in hiring. John Stangler is, as well with his staff. They were still trying to get a, maybe a custodian or two hired yet today. We've had some food service stuff, but all instructional staff, all of those hires were fully in place. So, and we're very pleased with the, the quality of people that we brought on board. We've already, we just got done talking about the new facilities, a lot of work having that ready to go. But being able to put students into those new spaces right away has been a real win. I don't know if Maura or Anna, have you guys been able to experience some of our new, newer spaces?
Yeah, she's been in the multi-purpose room for a couple of weeks now. Robotics was scoped out the place, so I had to look with some of the robotics mentors today. And robotics and chair are showing a closet, so we had to explore that today, which is nasty.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit of an increase in your supply or your storage area there. How's it working out for practice?
Pretty good. The space is a little awkward with the mats. We have like them rolled up at the end.
Yeah.
But we're also supposed to get new mats soon. Someone just donated a bunch of money to our program. So our hope is to get new mats some point this year. So we'll see how that situation works out. But it's been working out for us this basketball season in there. And it feels a lot more private than in the atrium.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think there's some equipment for the weight room area that needs to get out of there.
It got out of there.
Then I think you can turn your mats the other way, I thought.
Oh, yeah, it's like, oh, like, there were like bars in there that, but those are gone now.
That's gone now, okay. Yeah, good. Anna, you been able to get into those at all?
I've walked through them, but I haven't really have, had like an opportunity to do any like activities in there, but it looks nice.
Yeah.
I've heard good comments from everybody and seems like people are really excited about it, so.
Neither of you are in culinary? Haven't been able to do that yet, so, all right, good. So, I mean, those things went well. Parent squares are a new communication platform. Very intuitive, pretty easy to use. Just acknowledge Candace Bentley Held, who's really done the heavy lifting and the background with all of the setup and those things and making sure everything syncs with Skyward. And then Miranda's been kind of the point person with getting the information out and communicating. And then it, it just, it'll be, we'll be doing some surveying with parents here in the fall to see what their reactions are. Because that's the whole idea is to consolidate, communicate more effectively. I've used it already for mass communication. It worked very easy. I can, it's much easier for me to use to get messaging out and those things because I can do it right from my phone versus having to get on a desktop and all that kind of stuff, so. So that, we think, is, has went really well. Buses, you know, there's, the, that has went pretty well. We haven't had drivers. Uh, we haven't had driver shortage, uh, issues like we've had in past years, really, I'd say going back to probably middle of last fall, uh, we had a really smooth spring in terms of, um, being staffed and, and not having lots of delays with buses, 'cause we can remember back to when that wasn't the case, and that was not fun. So that's been going pretty well. Um, uh, acknowledge really all of our principals, I think all the, the buildings seem, really have things, uh, running, uh, very smoothly, uh, I've, I don't have complaints from parents, I don't have issues or concerns that we've been dealing with. Keep knocking on that. Um, uh, Anthony and Robin and everything that they did to get our new staff, uh, ready to go, um, we've already mentioned Candace, but also Becky Cook and everything with Skyward with registration and all that stuff, anything Skyward, those are our two superstars with that, Miranda, with all the communication that goes out. Our building secretaries are often unsung heroes with what it takes to make sure that, uh, the school year gets off, uh, to a good start, um, so, I don't know if you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would echo building principals and teaching staff, um, as we roll into year two of the teaching and learning strategic plan goals, um, you know, we have high expectations for our buildings and our staff, so there's a couple new things that we rolled up, rolled out at the beginning of this school year and kinda started that work in the summertime, and I just was very impressed with, you know, how staff responded, how our building principals kinda rolled their sleeves up and, um, supported their staff, and if there were questions, they were to their, there to answer and support, so, yeah, I could not, from a teaching and learning standpoint, couldn't have asked for a better start to the school year.
So, take any questions you might have, but, um, so far, so good off to a great start.
No questions. All right, awesome, good news. Uh, personnel issues, there are none.
Right. No resignations, no employments, no leaves.
Board goals and operations, um, upcoming activities, so, um, next Monday night, um, from five-thirty until eight, um, we have our goals committee meeting, uh, dinner will be, uh, provided, and Tammy's already taking care of that for us, um, so hopefully everyone can attend and come with your ideas, um, thought through ahead of time. Monday, September twenty-second is the next board meeting, um, there's a six PM policy committee meeting followed by the regular meeting at seven. Thursday, October second, again, is the WASB Fall Regional Meeting and Workshops, starts out with a pre-meeting workshop that talks about truancy, student attendance, um, it's followed by dinner and a great program, um, where dignitaries from WASB give us legislative updates, and it's just really a great program. Um, and I think they can still register, right? Yeah, so it's available if you, if you do wanna attend. It's a great thing, great program. Friday, October third, is the homecoming parade and game, so let's talk this through. So last year, we used the two golf carts, Tammy did an amazing job of decorating for us, and there was hardly room for us to ride for all the bags of candy. So first, I just wanna ask, um, looking at your calendars, how many people think they're available to participate?
Me.
Four of us? Okay, so that would be two, we could do two golf carts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, any other thoughts on that? Two golf carts? I think we're good.
Yeah, and I put a note in the DA report that I sent out, but apologize, but I will be gone, so I will, I will be in New York City celebrating, uh, my baby girl's twenty-first birthday with her, so I won't be able to make it.
And Tammy let us know if you need any help with those decorations. Okay, awesome. Um, and then finally, October thirteenth, um, is another business affairs at six, followed by a regular board meeting. So, um, legislative update.
Yeah, really not, uh, much going right now. We are, um, uh, I did reach out to Senator Hutton on behalf of SWSA, I did not hear back, to try to see if we could get, um, him and to talk about the rehired annuitants bill that's out there. That was kinda the one that's, that, uh, impacts us, that we have some really interest in hopefully that moving forward, um, for school systems in general, just to have more flexibility with, uh, rehiring retired annuitants, uh, so hoping to make a connection there and, uh, get some momentum with that, but outside of that, I don't know, John, if there's really anything else hopping right now?
Yeah, we did reach out on, uh, Senate Bill two oh three, which, um, involves a regulation of pharmacy benefit managers.
Oh, yes.
And some of the impact that could have on self-funded health plan costs, so, just, we're monitoring that right now.
I had a good conversation actually with Senator Hutton on that, um, uh, yeah, we spoke on the phone, that is one, um, and John, you can jump in if I mess this up at all, but basically, the bill that's out there would really restrict entities like ourselves to internationally source or even through mail order, uh, pharmaceuticals, which would put us at a significant disadvantage, a huge part of the savings we've had with self-funding has been managing pharma. What I liked about my conversation with Senator Hutton, who sees the issues, 'cause he's also an employer, and he's had to do his own renewal, and he recognizes that, um, the ability to manage pharmaceuticals and that, from what I can see, that bill only would benefit pharmaceutical companies and the pharmacies, so, um, I, it does not sound like that's going to be moving forward, but we'll see.
Okay. Tammy, any citizen comments?
No citizen comments.
Thank you. Then with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. I just wanna say that again, thank you for all your great.